Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Land Use Committee. This is Ed Riesinger, Chair of the Committee. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So before we start, Ed, I welcome everyone to the Committee hearing. Matt, you want to do roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll now call roll of Committee members. When I call your name, please let us know that you're here. Councilman Riesinger?
Here.
Councilwoman Sneed?
Here.
Councilwoman Clark?
Here.
Councilwoman Costello?
Present.
Councilwoman Dorsey?
Here.
Councilman Pinkett?
Here.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Present.
Councilman Stokes?
I am here.
Thank you. And I think we're also joined by Councilman McCray.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, everyone is here.
Okay, Matt, you want to do your presentation regarding WebEx?
Yes. Bear with me one second. Hi, everyone. This is just a presentation going over some of the controls for WebEx hearings. Here we have the mute button, so everyone can mute themselves when they're not speaking. Video, if you need to turn off or on your video. To see the participants who are in the hearing, you can click on the Participants button. You can also see any chat that's being used as part of the hearing. And then at the end, you'll be able to leave the meeting, the X there. The Raise Hand function, if you click on the three dots in the line of controls, should be at the top, and you can use that to indicate that you wish to say something for members of the public. You'll use that to let us know if you have a question for any of the agencies, or if you'd like to testify at the end of the hearing. And view options on the screen, the top right-hand corner, and you have a few different options shown here. And just some best practices for WebEx hearings. Try to find a quiet space with good light and strong internet connection, so you can be seen and heard. Turn on video when you are speaking. Identify yourself before you speak. Mute yourself when you are not speaking. Speak slowly and clearly. Be present. Don't try to multitask. Be patient. And wear headphones with a microphone to cut down on background noise. For public testimony for computer users, the committee staff will coordinate public testimony. You can use the Raise Hand function in WebEx to indicate that you wish to testify. You can raise your hand at any time, but we won't actually take testimony until we get to that portion of the hearing. And each speaker must state their name prior to testifying. And public testimony for phone attendees. We will not be able to identify you by name, because WebEx does not give us that information. So we will unmute each caller individually during the public testimony portion of the hearing. And attendees will hear two beeps when they're unmuted. If you do not wish to testify, please say so when you hear those two beeps. If you do wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. And if a speaker is inaudible, they'll be asked to call back. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Matt. We are here for City Council Bill 19-0417. It's a conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the ER8 zoning district with variances located at 1410 West Saratoga Street. It's properly known as, again, 1410 West Saratoga Street, Block 0152, with Lot 056, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat, and greening variances from certain gross-floor area, gross-floor area per unit type, and also off-street parking regulation. The public notice requirements have been met, and at this time, if he's here, is the Chair recognized. I recognize Councilman Bullock, if he has a few words he wants to say about his bill. John, are you there? No? Okay, so at this time, we will go with Agency Reports Staff. Martin French, are you representing planning on this?
Yes, yes, thank you. Martin French for the Baltimore City Planning Department on behalf of the Planning Commission. At its regular meeting on September 12th of 2019, the Planning Commission considered City Council Bill 190417. The Commission reviewed a staff report which recommended approval of this bill. They adopted a resolution in which they resolved that the conversion would not be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, or welfare, would not be precluded by any other law, including an applicable urban renewal plan, would not be contrary to the public interest, would be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning code, and meets all criteria for approval specified in Section 5-406B of the Zoning Code of Baltimore City, as described further in the report. Staff noted that the variances that are included in the bill are approximately 2% of the minimum requirements contained in the zoning code for lot area and for floor area for conversion, and therefore did not have a problem with those particular variances, in fact, recommend their approval under the circumstances. In the same vein, the parking variance included in the bill is not technically necessary, as the property could provide one off-street parking space. But the Planning Commission supports that variance being included in the bill, so as not to require the property owner to pay the rear yard in order to provide a parking pad, which could otherwise be provided. In addition, the Planning Commission determined that the nature of the site, including its size and shape, are adequate for the proposed use. There would be no negative impact to traffic patterns. Proposed use would not impair present and future development of the lot or the surrounding area. There would be no negative impact resulting from proximity to dwellings, churches, schools, public structures, or other places of public gathering. There is adequate accessibility of the premises for emergency vehicles. There is adequate light and air to the premises and to properties in the vicinity. There are also adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities. Proposed use would not interfere with preservation of cultural and historic landmarks and structures. Proposed use would not alter the character of the neighborhood. Proposed use is consistent with the provisions of the city's comprehensive master plan, also with the provisions of the applicable urban renewal plan, and meets all other applicable standards and requirements of the zoning code. For that reason, Planning Commission is recommending that this bill be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Any of my colleagues have any questions for planning? No? Okay, thank you, Martin. Now go to BMZA. Anybody there representing BMZA?
Hi, leaving a do for the BMZA. BMZA stands by its report recommending approval of this bill.
Okay, thank you. DOT, Department of Transportation?
DOT stands by its bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. Law Department?
Good afternoon. This is Vic Turbola from the Law Department. We're prepared to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency. Mr. French just provided you facts, along with the facts that are in the report. And if you agree with the facts, or substantially agree with the facts, you will be lawfully able to pass this bill.
Thank you. HCD?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Committee. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our report in support of the bill.
Thank you. BDC?
Good afternoon, everyone. Nikki Davis, Baltimore Development Corporation. We stand by our report and have no objection to this bill.
Thank you. Fire Department? Anyone from the Fire Department? I see here that the Fire Department has no objection. Now we go to the Parking Authority. Anyone there from the Parking Authority? No one from the Parking Authority. Okay, they're not opposed. Matt, is there anybody here for public testimony?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do not see any hands raised. I will go through the callers, and if anyone from the public would like to testify, who's joining us by WebEx, please use the Raise Hand function to let us know. In the meantime, I'm going to unmute the first caller now.
There is no zoning calls?
Three, three calls. And there's no response from the first caller. Second caller is just unmuted. Have testimony. Okay, no response from that caller. And the last caller has just been unmuted. And no response from that caller. And I think we now have somebody from Parking.
Yes.
Yeah, that was Law. Go ahead.
Yes, I couldn't unmute for some reason, but PABC stands by its support and is not opposing.
Okay, thank you. Matt, is that?
I do not see any additional public testimony.
Okay, so that ends public testimony, the Agency Reports. Do I have a motion to move the bill favorable?
Motion to move the bill favorable.
Second.
Middleton, and he seconded it?
Sneed.
Sneed.
Sneed, okay, thank you. So Middleton moved, seconded by Councilwoman Sneed. Riesinger votes yes. Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed, yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Costello?
Costello is a yes.
Costello is yes. Dorsey?
I will vote yes on every conversion ever.
Okay, well, let's start with this one first, okay?
Yes.
Middleton, yes. Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett is yes. Stokes?
Yes.
And Robert Stokes?
Yes.
Yes, for Stokes, so we have 17 yes favorable. This bill will come out when second reader, June 22nd. Oh, we have Finley standing here? Yeah, because I didn't see Finley turn here. They...
Finley's back.
Oh, the Finley of facts? Okay. Yeah, okay. It's been a while. Do I have a motion to move the Finley of facts?
So moved.
So moved by Dorsey. Do I have a second?
Second, Clark.
By Clark. All those who favor the Finley of facts say aye.
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 Who's opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The Finley of fact passed, and this bill will come out on June 22nd. Now we are on...
Mr. Chair.
Now we are on City Council.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
A point of order. We just voted on the Finley of fact only?
No, we voted. I mean, I can go back to make it official. We voted on the bill. I could go back to make it legitimate.
It's up to you, Mr. Chair.
Huh?
Totally up to you. I just noticed that we voted on the Finley of fact last. That's all.
I forgot the Finley of facts, so... Have I got to go back?
Yeah, this is Victor. Yep, please go back and do the facts, and then we'll do the other.
Okay, we'll keep it clean. So we passed the Finley of facts. Now I'm going to have a motion to move the bill favorable.
Motion to move the bill favorable. Middleton?
Second.
Second, Clark.
It's Clark. Riesinger votes yes. Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Costello?
Costello is a yes.
Dorsey?
Yes, every time.
Dorsey's yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Pinkett?
Yes.
Robert, Councilman Robert Stokes?
Yes, Councilman Riesinger.
Okay, so this is seven to the affirmative. The bill passes favorable. And this will come out, Bill 19-0417 will come out June 22nd. Huh? Yeah, I think I did say, yeah, the bill's favorable. Yes. Now we are on City Council Bill 20-0494. This is a conditional use banquet hall located 5401 Bel Air Road. Purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions. Establishment, maintenance, and operation of a banquet hall on the property known as 5401 Bel Air Road, Block 5989A, Lot 019, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat. Public notice requirements have been met. And at this time, I call on Councilwoman McCray. It's your bill. You want to say a few remarks?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the members of the Committee. This is for a conditional use at 5401 Bel Air Road for a banquet hall. One of the main reasons that I sponsored this bill was after listening to my residents speak about how when they need to have an event, whether it is small or large, whether it's simply a birthday party or a graduation party pre-COVID-19, they have to answer one of our neighboring counties, which is usually Baltimore County, to have this, because we do not have this resource, this business, within this vicinity. I want to thank you all. 100% support it. We need this business in my district.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to a colleague? No? Okay, so at this time, we'll go into Agency Reports, planning staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Committee. Martin French for the Baltimore City Planning Department and the Planning Commission. At its regular meeting of March 5th of this year, the Planning Commission considered City Council Bill 20-0494. The Planning Commission reviewed an attached staff report, which you should also have a copy of, which recommended approval of this bill, and adopted this resolution. The Planning Commission finds in accordance with subsections 5-308 and 5-406 of Article 32, the Zoning Code, that the conditions on which this application is based are unique to the property for which the variance is sought and are not generally applicable to other property within the same zoning classification. The unnecessary hardship or practical difficulty caused by the code has not been created by the intentional action or inaction of any person who has an interest in the property. The purpose of any variance is not based exclusively on a desire to increase the value or income potential of the property. Any variance would not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity or substantially diminish and impair property values of the neighborhood. Any variance is not precluded by and will not adversely affect any urban renewal plan of the city's comprehensive master plan, or any historical and architectural preservation district, and would not otherwise be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, or welfare, or be in any way contrary to the public interest. Planning Commission reviewed a staff report which recommended amendment of the bill. And the amendment is of a technical nature, and that is that the reference to 5401 Bel Air Road modified to state the second-floor area of 5401 Bel Air Road, as it is the intention of the banquet hall operator prospectively to use only the second-floor area of that property for the banquet hall, the first floor of the property being currently occupied by another commercial establishment. There was a revised plat map prepared today by Jamie Williams of our planning staff, and I'm going to hold up this copy of it to the camera, and I hope you can read it if I hold it steady enough. The purpose is to modify the legend at the base of this particular plat map to state number 5401 Bel Air Road, second-floor area only. On the basis of that amendment, the Planning Commission is recommending approval of the bill. Are there any questions?
Any questions to colleagues on the Committee, whatever, for the bill from planning staff? No? Thank you, Mr. French. We will now go to BMZA.
BMZA stands by its report recommending approval with the amendments proposed by the Planning Department.
Thank you. DOT?
Mr. Chair, Liam Davis, Department of Transportation. DOT stands by its bill report, which is no objection.
Law Department?
Good afternoon. Elena DePietro for the Law Department. I have a question for clarification before I give my report from Mr. French. He was talking about a variance. I wasn't unaware there were variances involved in this. I thought it was just a conditional use.
Martin? It's a conditional use. However, there was a discussion in the Planning Commission about the issue of parking spaces required for a banquet event. The zoning code only requires one space for every 10 persons of rated capacity. This particular property has not yet been rated by the Fire Department, as the use is not yet being approved. So in the event that a variance would be required, the Planning Commission wanted to go on record as supporting any variance. It relates to parking only.
All right, thank you very much. It just threw me off for a second there, since I didn't read about it in the report. Sorry about that. The Law Department has reviewed the Planning Commission report as well as the bill, and it proves that the bill reform legally provided that the council finds facts that support the conditional use and that can be under the parameters in the law. The Plan and Commission report does have some facts, and if the council finds them sufficient, it can be used to approve the bill.
Thank you. HCD?
Thank you. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. Excuse me. DHCD stands by our report in support and no objection to this legislation.
Thank you. BDC? Anyone from BDC? No one from BDC. Have we received a report from BDC, Matt?
I do not have a report in the file from them. I think somebody from BDC was on earlier, though.
Anybody from the Mayor's Office want to respond to that from BDC? No? Police Department, 41st of Planning. We have the Parking Authority. Anyone from the Parking Authority?
Parking Authority does not oppose the passage of the bill.
Okay, thank you. That takes care of the Agency Reports. Do we have any testimony, Matt?
Mr. Chair, we do not have anyone with their hand raised so far. Just a reminder for everyone joining us, the public, if you wish to testify, please use the Raise Hand function. Let us know. We do have two callers, one whom I think is the applicant for this bill. I'm going to unmute her now.
Mr. Chair.
Yes? That's with Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question for planning. And it's really more of a broad question. It has really nothing to do with this particular bill or this application for this location, or the applicant, or anything of the sort. I just have a question in general about banquet halls. Because this is a use permission, it becomes a transferable land right, which, am I understanding, if the property changes owners, or this portion of the property changes lessy, they... The new owner or tenant does not have to reapply to continue to use it as a...
That is correct, Councilman.
And so if, you know, a good... I'm sorry, there's like a lot of noise on here.
Sorry, give me one second.
Will you mute? So, can you use... Go ahead.
I have another question. It's just like a lot of noise right now.
That's me. I muted myself. Go ahead.
Okay. So, Martin, in the event that, like, somebody... So one of the provisions in the definition of a banquet hall is that they cannot use a promoter to have, like, one-off events that are paid for, you know, that are ticketed, or whatever, open to the general public and things like that. In the event that somebody violates that provision, like, repeatedly, is there any way... Does the city have a method of, like, clawing back the use permission, essentially stripping the use permission for a banquet hall?
As I understand it, zoning enforcement should be called first in the event there is a violation to do a zoning inspection to determine that the standards of the zoning code are being violated. If zoning enforcement inspection determines that is in fact occurring, it is the responsibility of the zoning administrator to issue a revocation of the permit, the use and occupancy permit that allows the banquet hall to operate. The operator would have the ability to appeal that revocation to the zoning board, and then BMZA would have to make a decision as to whether whatever happened was the cause of the revocation of the use and occupancy permit.
I have two callers that I have to go through.
And so even...
There are two callers. One of them is the applicant, so I think she does want to speak.
I'm sorry, I was still just... One more question here, following up with Mr. French. In a case like that where the use is conditional by board, does the... If they have an appeal hearing, is that appeal still conducted by the BMZA rather than the City Council?
My understanding is it would be the BMZA, because they receive all appeals concerning revocation of use and occupancy permits. And that is the legal action that would need to be taken from a zoning code perspective if there was a violation of the zoning code.
Thank you, Mr. French. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate everybody appeasing my curiosity here. Thank you.
It was a good question, Councilman Dorsey. Anyone else? Okay, I will go to public testimony. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, going back to callers, we still have no hands raised from anybody joined by computer. First caller, I'm unmuting now.
Can you hear my voice?
Yes, yes.
Okay, the Chair, the Board members, and everyone present, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. You want to give us your name?
My name... Yes, my name is Blessing Okoro. I am a small business owner, one of the minority women in business. I also certify as MBA, MBE, SBA, DBA, here in the State of Maryland. Having small businesses is not to my own benefit. I have a mission in establishing small businesses, and my mission is to use it to help people in need of jobs, no matter how small it is. I am here in support of the banquet hall for at least with two reasons. Number one, job creation and opportunity. As I said it before, I know how... As I said that before, I know how hard and how it feels for someone, especially the single mom at this critical time, to have children and life to maintain but have no income to sustain them. It is hard. This is the time we should come together as community to help someone get jobs by allowing small businesses like the banquet hall to create jobs for people who are in need, and let us come together and give hope to the hopeless. The banquet hall, we employ few people to start with, which will help relieve someone from depending on government, as well pay taxes, at the end reduce unemployment rate and also be happy. Secondly, the Royal Banquet Hall is coming to improve the community. This is a place where anyone, including all of you here, can come to celebrate his or her special day, such as wedding, reception, anniversary, birthday, and so on. Also, the building where this banquet hall is situated is cleaned and secured, despite we have no control of any arts, but I have done more than the basic things that need to be done, such as, number one, I have installed 10 surveillance cameras from the entrance of this banquet hall to the ballroom. Number two, I have also secured contract already with a licensed security company that will be providing armed security men at any time there is an event. I think with this, everyone should join me, please, to bring hope to the hopeless, and let us see what we can do together at this critical time for job creation for our community, for the people who are in need of jobs to survive. At this point, I humbly thank you all for this wonderful opportunity, and may God bless you all. Once again, my name is Blessing Okoro for the Royal Banquet and Event Hall located at 5401 Bel Air Road, second floor, Baltimore, Maryland, 21206.
Thank, this is Chairman Ed Rice. I want to thank you for your testimony, and I want to thank you for investing into Baltimore City. What I recommend and ask that for now and into the future, that you work with Councilwoman McCray. I'm sure she will help you out with whatever need, whatever needs you need. Thank you for investing in Baltimore.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one additional caller, and then one person who raised their hand to testify by computer. The next caller?
Go ahead.
Now. Caller, do you have any testimony? And Noah Carver?
Hi, yeah. How are you? This is Noah Carver. I'm with 5401 Bel Air Road LLC, the owner of the property. I just wanted to say briefly that we are very excited to have Mrs. Okoro's banquet hall in the property, and just wanted to speak briefly to the possibility of a required parking variance. The property of 5401 Bel Air, 5401 Bel Air Road has a few more than 50 parking spaces associated directly with it, connected to the parking lot. It's all one giant parking lot, is also the Gardenville Shopping Center, which also belongs to us, and has several hundred more parking spaces. So in the, in the event that a, a variance for parking was necessary, I think that would be very easy for us to accomplish.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Matt, we have another caller?
Mr. Chair, I think that is it for public testimony, but Michelle Wersberger from the Police Department, I think, may have something to say.
Michelle, you have four?
Hi, Councilmen, members of the committee. Councilman, when you went through all the agency reports, you spoke for BPD and said we stand by our report. I just wanted to confirm that that is accurate and see if anyone had any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Michelle? Any questions for Michelle? No? Thank you, Michelle. Keep safe. So there's no more public testimony, correct? Matt?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So at this time, do I have a motion to move the finding of facts?
So moved. Clark?
Second. Middleton?
Second by who?
Middleton.
Middleton? All those who favor, favor the finding of facts, say aye.
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 Say nay. The ayes have it. The finding of facts is passed. We have amendment on this bill. Do I have a motion to move the amendment?
So moved. Clark?
Second. Dorsey?
Dorsey seconds. All those who favor the amendment, say aye.
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 Those who say nay? The ayes have it. The amendment passes. I need a motion to move the bill.
So moved, as amended.
Second.
I got lost there for a moment. Can we go back? Who favored?
Bill moved as amended by Dorsey.
Okay.
Seconded by Clark.
Clark? Thank you. Voiceover votes yes. Snead?
Yes.
Snead, yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Costello?
Costello's a yes.
Costello, yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Dorsey's yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett is yes. Councilman Robert Stokes?
Councilman Robert Stokes is a yes. Councilman Riceinger?
There's seven yes in favor. This bill passes favorable with the amendments. It will come out on second reader, June the 22nd. This concludes City Council Bill 20-0494. So concludes the annuals committee hearing. Thank all of you for attending.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.